We, um, yeah. So, we are actually going to go into executive session now. We hope this will be not long. We need to discuss matters regarding the appointment of the library trustee. So, we're going to go right back there. Do you have to, does anybody have to second that?
Yeah, you made the motion. We need a second.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes, we will return. So, we are back. I'd like to call this session back to order.
I need a second to make the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, um, we have made a decision on who the next trustee will be. They will be here until the next election. We had 10 people we interviewed. So, I would like to nominate, um, I was going to say Cory Booker. What's Cory?
Cory Galloway.
(laughing). I've been watching the news too much.
Cory Booker would serve.
No, I've been watching the news too much. Um, I'd like to nominate Cory Galloway as our trustee, who will then, um, his term will end, uh-
May 19th or May?
His term will end at the end of the year, right? And then the person-
No, it will end, it will end in May, after the election.
May 3rd? After the election. Um, can I get a second? Is that how this?
No, I thought it was-
Technically, who, if Cory-
You just say is, it'll end in line with the prescribed rules of the-
Yes, it will end in line with the prescribed rules for, uh, the trustee appointment. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Um, Dan Bonet is not here. He's in favor as well. I don't know how that works.
I don't think we can record his vote though.
But it's unanimous.
Um, and the motion passes. Boom. Okay. Um, I also need to make a change to the agenda. Whitney would like us to move up her pieces because she'd like to, um, go home. So, if everybody could look at their-
I don't feel well. It's not just because I don't want to be here.
She's sick. Um, so if everybody could look at their agenda, what I'd like to do is move up the policy and the special projects next. But what I'd like to do even before that is if we could do the budget discussion so that Whitney can be here. So, um, we're going to do, this is how we're going to do it. We're going to approve our minutes and then we're going to hear from Chuck about the budget and then we're going to hear from Whitney. So, if you guys can just look at your minutes. Why does this say, Didira, is this Didira here?
No.
This is wrong. So, I just need to make this change. It says Didira was here, but she's not here.
She was not there?
No.
Were you here la, was Chuck here last time?
I think I was here last time.
Chuck was here.
I think I was excused from the, just, the, uh, December meeting.
Mistake, sorry. Can fix that.
Do we have an attendance?
Sure, we do. We can go back and look.
No, one going around. You guys see anything else?
I read them.
You read through them?
Yeah.
Did everybody read through them? I'd like to make a motion to pass the minutes with the amendment, with the amended change. Didira is on here.
And Chuck was here also.
And Chuck was here.
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Um, Chuck?
So, um, Beth convened a couple of meetings of the Budget Committee, uh, over the past couple of months. And so, as, uh, as we've done in previous years, Tom, just to kind of go through the process briefly, Tom, um, you know, went out to the, the various department heads and relevant members of the staff to understand the needs, um, as, as envisioned by the, by his team for the library for next year's budget. Uh, and that was a starting point. And then Tom put together a list, a list of, working with Gene, things that, that we wanted to budget for, uh, in, in the upcoming year. And also took a hard look at the existing last year's or current year budget and the expenditures and tried to also identify savings in addition to, uh, items that were potentially incremental to last year's spend. And so, we then as a group sat down, myself, Beth, and Didra, and went through in a detailed way with Tom and Gene, uh, the overall budget. And just, I just wanted to give a little perspective on the process and we've, we've met a couple of times. And as, um, we've done in prior years, uh, we have come up with several different scenarios for the budget and one of them is what we're going to, um, recommend. We're not going to vote today on the budget. I think we'll vote next meeting, but we wanted to socialize with this group, uh, what we were thinking and obviously give people an opportunity to ask questions, make comments, um, et cetera. And so, in your pack, you should have, um, some pages that look on the front, 2020 to 2021 budget requests. I'll just give everybody a minute to find that piece of paper. And all of this, these lovely pieces of paper are made possible by the lovely Gene Manning, um, working in conjunction with Tom. Yes, thank you.
You did a great job.
Uh, everybody have the papers?
Yes.
Great. So, um, the, the first page are the 2021, uh, budget requests. Um, and so, I'll just review them briefly, uh, and, and you'll see how they then fit into the different budget scenarios we prepared. The first one is potentially the adding of an assistant director position. Um, and, you know, just to give a little perspective on that, and Tom and others may add some later, uh, the idea behind assistant director position is most other libraries of our size have an assistant director position. Tom obviously spends a tremendous amount of time, especially out in the community, you know, making our library public, being out there engaging with all different organizations around the community, which takes up, up a tremendous amount of time. Uh, and the assistant director position, I almost think about it in our discussions as almost a business manager for the library, so somebody to really partner closely, you know, with Tom, with Gene to, you know, look at how we're managing the, uh, hourly employees, look at how we're, you know, we've got all sorts of contracts where we pay for different services, making sure we're regularly rebidding those contracts, trying to squeeze out costs where we can. And so, the way I think about this position, it actually could result in, and also focused on, we get a tremendous amount of grants today, but also focused on looking for more grants. So, this position in my mind actually could end up creating savings and more revenue for our library over time if we get the right person. So, that's, that's one item that's on there. And you'll see, this position is not in all the budget scenarios, it's in some of the budget scenarios. The second one is adding, um, staff to the teen room. I think we, you know, well, I won't speak for everybody, I think a lot of people would agree that in the city of New Rochelle, providing services to our teens and our children is incredibly important and we do, we think we do a great job of this, but we think the need is, um, i, for more services for that, for this population of people is really important in our community. So, that's the second, uh, these, these are the two kind of big items frankly, uh, in terms of increase. Um, and then we get to smaller items. The Westchester Library, um, service is going to be increasing its fees, uh, to, to member libraries, that's relatively nominal number. Additional children and teen programming, I already, I mentioned why that's important. Um, increasing, uh, our materials budget slightly. Those, well, remember, we slashed the materials budget a couple of years ago and we added a little bit last year. We think it makes sense to add a little bit more this year. Uh, Tom can provide, um, any color that folks want to hear on that.
For our library, yes. Yes, for our library.
It's, it's small.
It's crazy, right?
Okay, it's not in the budget anyway, but go ahead because there's no increase in fees.
Well, there's, the bottom line Francis, um, WLS may not be increasing fees, but in the context of the WLS IT budget that each of the 38 libraries have to pay, according to the shifting winds and sands of, um, the formula, New Rochelle will be paying quite, paying quite a bit more.
Because I'm, I'm going to say about the finance model in my report later.
But that's the, that's the high view in terms of each library, we will be paying more.
The good news, it's not a big number.
No, it's not a large increase.
Um, so we'll still invite you to our meetings, Francis. Um, and then, we, continuing to, we buy more replacement computers. Computers, everybody knows that, um, uses technology, becomes obsolete and we have to regularly, we have a regular program of refreshing our computers to meet the needs of our patron and then, patrons. And then, look, the need for software and hardware, as noted by the previous item, continues to grow and so additional software to meet the needs of our constituency. So, that's the total list of incremental requests that, that was put forth for consideration. So, it's about $194,000 or, as folks can see. So, we, if you flip to the next page, um, as I mentioned, as we have in previous years, we looked at several different budget scenarios because we are ever mindful of the burden to the taxpayer in the city and balancing the burden to the taxpayer with the needs of the community and trying to be as thoughtful as we can. So, um, the first column, uh, in this summary budget is what's the current budget, 2019, 2020, our adopted budget of, uh, $5.83 million. The first scenario we asked for was to keep, uh, the budget flat, so 0% increase. And keeping the budget flat, folks, um, you know, that have attended these meetings before and that are on the, on the board will know that we have mandated salary increases due to the union contract. So, if we were to keep things totally flat year over year, that would mean a reduction in services and a significant reduction in expenditures, um, on other items. And Tom can certainly, uh, touch on specifics of what is affected there if people have questions. The second, um, and, and, you know, this is not, we, we would love to keep the budget flat, but because of the, our biggest expense is our people and because we have that mandated, um, salary increase, um, we feel that the sacrifice of services that we would have to make to keep the budget flat is not appropriate, um, for the, for the patrons of, of our library. So, we won't be recommending that, uh, scenario. The second one keeps the budget in line with the tax cap of 2%. And if you look, um, if you look on the next page, you may want to toggle between this page and the next page, the next page shows you for the different scenarios, what the differences are. So, when we keep the tax cap at 2%, we're not able to fund that assistant director position. We are- Teen room assistant.
Actually, Chuck, um, we will, we will be able to fund the teen room, uh, programming assistant because in the budget already, we have, um, a considerable amount of monies that are being used to pay for that person in a part-time.
That's right. So, in the, in this, in the 2% scenario, we can fund the teen room assistant, we cannot fund the assistant director. And then we've made some reductions to some of the other line items, as you can see, including the materials, a budget increase and the, you know, we've budgeted less than half of what we would like for the replacement of computers or the, or what we have in the, you know, the, the, um, full ask budget for computers. So, this is the 2% increase, uh, or $82,000 as opposed to the full ask, which is $194,000 increase. Then we looked at a third scenario, which was sort of a, a middle ground, which is an increase of 3.65%, which is the, um, which is the scenario that we are going to, uh, recommend, um, if memory serves. Uh, and in this scenario, we are able to fund the assistant director position and the teen position. Um, and you can see we've made some other small adjustments to the other line items. But again, what I would say about the assistant director position, I think this has the potential to like actually save us money and get us more revenue through more grants. So, that's at least personally how I'm thinking about it.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
In this scenario, it, sometimes it's hard to-
Which one? The mid-ground?
The mid-ground, which is the one we're recommending. We actually still are cutting, um, materials budget. They asked for 16.5, we're only doing 12.5. We're still cutting the computer, um, budget. They asked for 23, we're doing 13. We're still doing additional software. So, even in this three-point, um, this three-point, what is it?
6.5.
6.5, we're still cutting, we're not getting to what our staff is asking for, um, because we just can't do it at all. So, even there, we're making, um, sacrifices.
And I think it's worth mentioning that, uh, the middle ground budget is less than the budget, um, increase that we witnessed in the current year.
Yes.
So, it's the lowest budget increase we've asked for in the past three years?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what we looked at?
Yeah.
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 So, it's lower than anything we've asked for in the past three years. And with that, we're able to get an assistant director, which I think is really, we, you know, most of our peers have it and it's almost, um, you know.
It's challenging, yeah.
It's, well, I mean, we're a huge library and we also have a lot of facility needs. And, you know, we have a development project going on here, so it would be nice to have somebody who, um, could have their eye on some of that stuff because there's added additional work that's going to happen, I'm sure, in the next three or four years.
And the last scenario is where we fund everything, the full ask. Um, look, in a perfect world where resources were unlimited, we would love to do this, but the reality is, um, it has an impact on the taxpayers that we think is too, too much to bear. Um, and, uh, so we're not advocating for that 5% increase. Um, and, and yeah, it was mentioned, this is the lowest increase we've had in the past three years, which is great.
Least, least increase.
Least increase the past three years. So, um, you know, I think that shows hopefully that we are trying to be respectful of the taxpayers because we are all taxpayers as well. So, uh, that's the proposal.
So, we don't, yeah, we're not going to vote on it, right?
Yeah, no, no, no. We wanted to let, kind of give people an opportunity to let it sit in, set in-
Will we vote on it at the next meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
No.
Yes, of course.
Sorry, I know I need to go. First of all, I think it would be very helpful for me, as I'm looking at this and trying to make sense of it, to, I see that the, where the total budget amounts are, but it would be helpful to see the variance between them. So, like what is the increase, um, the, the actual increase? So, you do that on the first page with the budget that you're, that you're proposing, right? That's the $194,000. Does that correlate with the 3.65?
No.
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 No. That's the 5.1.
It's the all-in.
It's the, it's the only one with all-in.
So, that would be helpful for me to compare what the difference is. The all-in is 194, what are the other ones?
Got it.
So, yeah.
To have another line underneath the total budget amount.
So, it's where we made the, it's where we made the cuts and the different ones. She wants to know exactly what those cuts are. But they're not, they're not, they're not easily, they're not easily-
Actually, they're, it's on, it's on this sheet. Do you see that sheet?
It's here.
It's there.
Here, so if you look at this sheet-
Oh, I see, okay.
Yep, it's here.
So, you did that, I got it, thank you.
Thank you.
We certainly have, there's, I mean, Gene's got spreadsheets upon spreadsheets behind this, so if somebody wants to dig into more specifics, we have them.
Easily available.
Yeah, no, it's just helpful to be able to understand and the way that I also think about it is, um, I have another couple of questions. So, the increase is a half-year salary position?
Yep.
So, that would presume then the following year would double this?
Right.
So, it would be 168, 169, 170?
Well, no, that, that, that amount includes not just the salary, but it also includes the fringe benefit package, health, retirement, um, social security.
This is just for half a year, right?
Right.
So, the following year for a full, oh, yeah.
But it won't be a salary, but the presumption is that the, that amount will, will double.
Double, yes.
For all, for not just salary, but for the entire suite of financial-
I understand, I understand. The package.
Yeah.
And then, my next question is related to the salary for the teen room assistant. Is this a comparable salary?
It is comparable.
It is, okay.
It is.
Do you think it's too low or too high?
I'm just surprised, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the qualifications are for a teen room assistant and what the, um-
It's actually, you, you asked the same question. It's 50.
Medical, health insurance, New York State.
Got it. The salary is more like that.
Got it, okay. That makes sense to me, thank you.
Beth asked the same question.
Got it, okay. Um, and then, my final question is just, or just a point, is just that are these sustainable, you know, going forward, that if a slash has to happen, is this something we would have to cut later if we don't get a budget passed or?
Well-
So, we can speak to that because we, um, so-
Could you pass this to Whitney?
So, this is, is this the job?
Yeah.
Oh, good, thank you, Tom.
Um, is it sustainable? Yeah, I mean, I think that's why we're not doing kind of the all-in. And the point about the director is that we're hoping that the assistant director can actually grow our funding. So, we're hoping that they, they actually put money into the library and not, you know, not be a cost center.
Yeah.
So, yes.
And, um, just in terms of salary, I want to, uh, address Whitney's, uh, concerns about comparability. Um, a few years ago, the board was, um, wonderful enough to create a children's, um, assistant and it was a bilingual position. And the salary is, um, the same salary schedule for that position will be given to the teen assistant. So, there is indeed comparability and certainly comparable outside of this building, but in other Westchester libraries.
Yeah, I mean, I think the salary looks high because it's all-in.
Because it's, uh, health benefits, retirement, et cetera.
Look, I, you know, I'm just asking, I, I feel, um, as a, as a taxpayer, as a, as a, as a representative of other taxpayers, I just, I want to know, you know, every year, you know, we, we ask for more money every year and I want the library to have everything. So, I typically would, you know, I wish we could give it everything and I, but I want to, I just want to understand what, what we're actually saying yes to. I, I think various materials and incrementally adding back budget for that, I, I mean, all of this makes perfect sense to me, I just had questions about it.
And also, I mean, Whitney, the, the reality is, this is a budget that, um, the board has to defend and with, during the election cycle and after. You have to be able to answer, uh, people, well, why did my taxes go up? Why is the library getting more money? And we all have to be able to, um, articulate the reasons why.
That's right.
So, any questions you ask, they're, they're reasonable.
And I mean, I always ask, like, what does that look like for me and my tax bill over the course of a year? And how do I map that out as valuable in other ways in my life?
I can-
And is it worth it to me?
Right.
And the answer for me is yes, but it might not be for other people.
Typically, what happens is, once, once the board makes a decision at, at its next meeting, I will go to the City Finance Commissioner and share our budget with, with him now and he will come back to me with information that relates to, um, the impact on the typical taxpayer, New Rochelle, and will also be able to give us an exact dollar increase for if we adopt, um, you know, any of these scenarios. So, that all, I mean, it's relevant, it's what, what we have to be able to share with our residents, um, our, our friends, our family, when we, when we talk about it during the election cycle and, and after. So, I'll have that for you after the March decision.
It's an important number and, and thank you to Chuck and Beth for your work and Didra for your, what?
And Gene. Gene has worked.
And Gene.
Gene has worked really hard.
Thank you, Gene. This is really great.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. And so, guys, um, look at it, read it, get comfortable with it, love on it, because we're going to vote on it next month.
And if there are questions, you can direct them to Chuck, um, to Gene, to, to Didra, Beth, myself, you know, we're here to answer anything that you have between now and the vote.
Thank you.
Um, now, we're going to turn to, uh, policy. We're just, we're going out of, as I said, we're going out of order.
Thank you for going out of order for me. Um, my policy, we have a policy update as of just today, actually, um, related to the eligibility requirements for new library card holders, um, between the ages of, well, right now, it's presently stated, um, that library, uh, children are eligible to obtain a library card when they can hold a writing utensil and, um, and write their name, their first name, right? It's not even their last name, I don't believe, right?
I think it's open to interpretation.
It sounds like, but. Yeah. So, the proposal from the, from the recently formed Foundation's Children's Committee, I don't think it's called that, children something.
Children's Services.
Services, um, is to expand, um, kind of the, the eligibility because if there's a child who is having trouble holding, um, their, a pencil or it has not mastered, but would benefit from having a library card and, um, they would like to propose having a, um, new policy stating that children are eligible with parental consent as long as a parent is present and has ID, um, and that the child is present also to receive the card, um, from birth to 11. And, um, the staff felt that this would expand, uh, access to reading and reading materials for children sooner, which is true and obvious and, um, and, and very beneficial, and that it would increase and help library statistics because there's more people who would, um, you know, a child, a little, little youngin' holding a library card coming in, um, would, would impact, um, our library usage. So, we, I had a question about, um, why is, why does it stop at 11?
That's when, um, a child is eligible for a teen card.
A teen card, and what are the requirements?
I had emailed you earlier, there are none. Just come in, say I'm 11 years old or older and I want my teen card and they get it. There are no, um, prescriptions for eligibility or qualification and I-
Do they need to have a ID?
Usually, or we, we will even take a school, uh, schedule. You know, we're pretty flexible because the whole idea is to find a way to-
Get them in.
Get them in the library and allow them to borrow material. And I just want to, just piggyback on Whitney's comments about, um, this, this, um, potential policy change. And this was initiated by our staff because they felt that the current policy was, was really, um, judgmental and difficult and not, um, really not, um, child-friendly or family-friendly. Um, and there have been instances in the past where children were turned down, um, because people were following the rules and it's really horrible. And so, I can tell you from the children's staff perspective, the circulation staff perspective, um, they are entirely in favor of this rule and really goes with our previous decision, the board's decision to, um, choose to not charge, uh, fines for the late return of, uh, children's material.
I like that.
Um, so, I mean, I think unless we feel like we need more discussion on it, I didn't write, I didn't bring the, um, I didn't bring what the verbiage is, but I like how the staff phrased it, which is just, um, the policy will state and we can, we can, after this meeting, just send an email that, that should state it this way. I don't know if we can do that and vote preemptively.
We can vote in concept that this is the, this is the, um, library's policy and we can come up with a, a, a document that meets, that meets the committee's, um, approval.
My committee mate, Sarah, do you feel comfortable with voting?
Yes, absolutely. I completely agree with this policy change. The one that we have right now, it seems a little antiquated. Um, so I think that it's great that we're going to encourage usage from a young age and a library card's really such a rite of passage, so everybody should be able to have one.
Um, good. So, with that, then I would make a motion to, um, change the language of the library eligibility, library card eligibility for children, um, to, to state that children are eligible as long as a parent is present and the child is present and the parent presents an ID and consents to the, um, to the, um, acquisition of a child's library card. Um, and we will write up the policy to that effect. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. That's my policy update, um, my special projects committee update. We, um, we selected, uh, Public Works Partners, they submitted a revised proposal. We should put that up on, um, somewhere in public so that people can see it. Um, and we are just waiting for, uh, we were waiting for tonight to, to appoint the new waiting for tonight to appoint a new person, because that person would sit on that committee, possibly. We don't have a third person yet, we wanted a third person. Maybe the configuration won't be that way, but we wanted to get cracking. So we are looking at the week of February 24th to have our first kickoff meeting, and we'll share a schedule and what this looks like, but this is really, again, about conducting a community needs assessment, what does the community want to see in their library going forward now and in the future. So that's that. So we've been in touch, and they're excited to move forward, and we will reconnect with them next week and establish our meeting time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you very much.
You are excused.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. Thank you for your service. Let's go to the financial reports.
Sorry. Just that, of course, as we head towards the final quarter of the fiscal year, we are in very good shape, very, very good shape, I'm happy to report, and nothing untoward.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Oh, okay, statistics?
It's over there.
Statistics?
You know, again, pro forma, that we have been incredibly busy in terms of our programs, our social service activities, usage in the library. Our access to viable circulation statistics through the Evergreen system is being challenged, system-wide. Overall, the county is seeing a decrease in usage, which doesn't match the anecdotal viewpoint of library directors. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that scenario. But the directors' group, along with WLS IT, are looking into it.
Okay. The WLS report?
Yeah, we had a very constructive meeting, that's all. Okay, I have a number
Thank you, Francis. Okay.
No, I have a number of issues I'd like to raise, and I go through them very, very quickly. And then one issue that I might spend a little time. One is that we had our last meeting on January 28th, and we, three new trustees was sworn in, one for District Eight, which is Parkes, Harrison, and then District 15, Yonkers, and Rye. And two, we had a new slate of officers was approved. The new president, board president now, is what is to be the vice president, Susan Marder. And Karen Zevin is the vice president, it is shared continuously as stretch. You just like to know that officers serve for one year in the board, and no board member may serve as president for more than two consecutive years. That's the rule. The board also took very quick note of the financial statement review for December 2019, it is an audited version, so we just took note of that. The direct executive director of WLS did a very comprehensive review of activities for 2019, and a preview of 2020. It is a 10-page, a 10-page review. If you really feel like reading it, it is quite interesting and quite informative, it covers issues like the IT services, the Evergreen migration catalog services, interlibrary loans, et cetera. So it gives you quite a comprehensive and satisfactory view of what the organization has been doing the past year, and what is the outlook for the coming year. We continue to get complaints, comments, and so on, from a number of libraries about the ongoing IT problems. Many continue to experience this problem still in their libraries, but they hope that the ongoing IT audit report will probably resolve some of these issues as soon as possible. But in the meantime, the WLS is being asked to continue and intensify its interaction with the libraries and exchange of information, et cetera. And related to this, about 10 days ago, the director, the IT director, Mr. Wilson Arana, very nice guy, circulated informally a one-page note, rather than an update of his department's IT activities, basically covering VDI, Network, Evergreen, and so on, just quickly telling us what's happened. Just an example, on VDI, he says that the management server will support the all-in-one units, it's being rebuilt and updated. And then the printing issues, which is a problem not only for our library, but for a number of libraries, that is also being addressed. On Network, he says, for example, that two library locations had new switches installed, and several other locations are being scheduled for upcoming. So that kind of update, just reassuring to members to know that something, I suppose, is happening. Now, on the Census 2020, the, there was not a whole lot of information. There's a lingering concern, or a growing concern, rather than lingering, a growing concern among board members, that the arrangement for the disbursement and the use of this $20 million that has been promised by the state, that doesn't seem to take off. We don't know what the arrangement is, how this money is going to be used, how it is going to be distributed. We have some idea about the 60, the 40, 60,000, that 60 million that is going to be given elsewhere, to motor vehicles, et cetera, and publicists. But the 20 million that is going to be channelled, which we are going to be beneficiary, I hope, the arrangement for the use of this money is not very clear. And so, there's a growing feeling that the time is running out. If something is not done quickly, in terms of how this money is going to be used, and when is this money going to arrive, et cetera, then it's probably going to be late. And that's the concern in the board. And then, lastly, before I come to my main point, the new board president, Susan, came out with an innovative idea. In the board, at one point, she said, all the board members should informally tell others about their own library, what they like about it, what is new about it, and so on, just extent to it, and is unprepared. Just tell us what you like about your library, what is special about it, et cetera. So we went around the table. I found it quite interesting. Of course, I talk about the general support that the community has for its library, I talk about the wonderful work you guys are doing, the board, and the foundation, and the friends, et cetera, and the others as well. The benefit of this is that you become less insular. You begin to like, look at the overall picture, what the libraries are doing within the county. And so that if you are really interested in a particular thing, art, or children's program, or something, that you see a particular library in your town, for example, is specializing in that, then you can run out there and then get more information about it. So I found it very, very interesting and very informative, and it was the most enjoyable part of the meeting. And so, I plan to recommend that this should become a regular feature of our meeting, not every month, every now and again, and everybody says something about what's happening in their lives. And then, the bulk of our discussion was on this thing called the finance model. I think this is the formula which WLS uses for charging member libraries. My grasp of this is not very thorough yet, so maybe you can, if the director could help us on that. I understand that this formula was developed in 2016 by WLS and PLDA, and approved the following year, 2017, for a four-year period with an escalation ladder. And the yearly escalation costs are determined based on services in place as of September 30th of the previous year. And that no restrictions were included for what cost factors may or may not be determined by member libraries. And so, after four years, then, this formula has to be reviewed. And it was supposed to have been reviewed last year, but it could not be reviewed last year because of the problems, you know, the IT problems, and the migration, et cetera. So that interrupted the plan to review this, and so it was postponed to October 31st. But the point is this, in the meantime, Mount Vernon Public Library, on the 1st of this year, informed WLS that it would no longer be part of the WLS network. And this withdrawal has had a negative impact on this.
Could I interrupt? Just to clarify, Francis is correct, it's not part of the telecommunications network. It's still
No, no, the organization.
But it's still part of the shared database and products that we have, so we'll all be able to see Mount Vernon's holdings and vice versa. But they are withdrawing from participation in the telecommunications component.
And that created a bit of concern in the board. So it was decided that the PLDA and the Budget Committee should meet to discuss this particular problem, and come out with a solution in the light of whatever. But the issue this raises is this, that can a member library, because of some dissatisfaction satisfaction with an issue or an arrangement or something, just unilaterally opt out of a common arrangement? That's question number one. And two, in the absence of any arrangement to accommodate this kind of, what can I call it, this kind of behavior, what do we do? I mean, if, let us say, just paraphrase, if Connecticut is fed up with the problems with the United States, and wants to withdraw from the union, it cannot just wake up in the morning and say, oh, get out. There are procedures to be followed in Congress, et cetera, et cetera. Just as when you come in, there are procedures to follow, and you want to get out, there are the procedures to follow. But that kind of arrangement doesn't exist in WLS. If a member is dissatisfied with one issue or another, and it wants to take a unilateral action. And so, it is strongly recommended that this matter be looked at. First of all, can a member, just because you are unhappy with something, just withdraw unilaterally, just inform WLS? And two, should we not have in place an arrangement to accommodate this kind of, this kind of situation in the future? So I think this discussion is going to continue, and one time I will like to seek your advice on that. I'll be talking to the director at length on this, so I can see my way clearly about it. Because I personally feel that unilateral behavior is not, to me, is not acceptable. When you work commonly in organization, you cannot just decide not to participate just like that, without others knowing. So I'm not blaming Mount Vernon, they have probably a genuine case, if I said a genuine case, but that has to be looked at. At the same time, at the same time, WLS should make sure that the situation it creates, choose member states, their member states, member libraries to opt out. We should make sure that the common arrangement is such that the member libraries are happy with it, and they get hope, and it should not be one that creates any satisfaction. So that's all I have to say. I hope it has not been too long, and we'll meet again.
Could I just, I'm sorry, make a few brief comments about Francis's report? In particular, the WLS IT budget, as I said earlier, we will likely see an increase, which is frustrating, because our service has certainly declined in the recent past. But be that as it is, we are in part of this consortium, and there are so many benefits, we want to continue, obviously. But Francis's comments about Mount Vernon deciding to withdraw from the network, it's really challenging, and it has major implications, because other aspects of the scenario, related to the fact that WLS signed a contract, a multi-year contract with LightPath for telecommunications services, without bringing it to the directors to talk about the implications, that's one thing. The other issue is, Mount Vernon is withdrawing because they felt that their service was not wonderful, it isn't wonderful, and because they had access to federal E-rate monies, and they wanted to take advantage of that. And Mount Vernon, believe me, is not the only library that's considering this step. There are a number of other libraries who are also thinking of withdrawing from the telecommunications system. So I think the bigger issue is, in my opinion, WLS, the staff and the board and the directors need to look at how WLS is functioning the formula, you know, the services. Is it à la carte? Is it, you know, one price gets everything, whether you use it all or not? There are lots of implications, challenges, and a real dialogue has to take place among all these parties.
Thank you. Please keep us up to date. At some point, I'm sure, we will want to kind of weigh into this idea of, can we just leave, can we not? But why don't you just keep us up to date? And if there's ever a board meeting where you think that's something that should go on the agenda, and we should really talk about it, just let me know.
And one last point, very briefly. You know, quite a lot happens in the PLDA meetings. So there's a proposal, we're discussing it briefly this afternoon, there's a proposal that the board should be represented in the PLDA meetings.
Say what the PLDA is, I guess.
The directors.
The Director's meeting.
Directors Association meetings, yeah. The board should be represented in.
Because the reason for that is that there has not been enough communication between the directors and the board, and by having trustees attend on a rotating basis, the communications may improve, A. And B, the way the directors' meetings are being reported by WLS at the WLS board meetings are not always entirely in sync with perhaps what happened.
And in order not to embarrass the PLDA, I understand that this suggestion came from them, which is probably very different, but it doesn't matter where it comes from. And so, there will probably be two members of the board represented in the, one permanently, continuously, the second member will be on a rotating basis. And it's been suggested that you as truly should be the permanent member in the.
Great. I am happy to hear that. I hope you're happy to hear that, it'll be at your meeting. Okay, so we're going to move on. The President's report, the only thing I have to tell you is, last time, we talked about perhaps the board member, the trustees' meeting with the new city council people, and I reached out to them, and they'd like to do that, and then I haven't, I haven't, I dropped the ball. So I need to get back on that. And of course, it's only three people that could meet with them, and so we can figure out who from our, who from the trustee board will do that. In addition to that, somebody suggested that we actually meet with our city council rep, so the rep who's in the, who, the rep which the library is in their jurisdiction, so that would be Evar, and so, City Councilman Evar. So I'm going to do that as well. So those are two meetings that I'm thinking that I'm going to put on the books for us, and whoever is available can attend. And it's just to let them know, update them, and tell them our concerns. That's all I got.
Okay. I'll try to make this quick. Just like to give updates regarding a variety of things happening. Initially, grants, as you folks know, we are about to embark on our second floor renovation project, Phase One. We are in receipt of our grant money from the state, and we are now at the point where we will make decisions about the proposals, probably next week, then order, and then move forward with this very exciting first phase of making the second floor a more functional, relevant, and attractive space. So that's good. The HCL project to work on boiler and other HVAC elements, there is a new boiler in place, other elements too. We are working on a few other improvements, and then we hope to close that grant. So that'll be, that'll be exciting. The two grants that we received approval in the final quarter of last year are $283,000, Phase Two, Second Floor renovation. We won't see the money until likely September. That's as it is, and we'll be ready, hopefully, to roll shortly thereafter. And the Huguenot Children's Library Stairway Replacement Project for just shy of $10,000, also waiting for the money in September of this year. Happy to report that the Rotary Club of New Rochelle approved a grant of $500 to our library for archival work, because our library has the Rotary Club collection, and our, just as a sidebar, our new archivist, David Rose, is doing wonderful things in a very short period of time. It's very exciting. The other $500 is not going through the library directly, but will go to the foundation, and the club will become a sponsor of the Foundation's scavaganza, which will be coming up in May. So that's exciting. Also, as you folks know, the RXR Community Building Fund deadline is Friday, tomorrow, and the library's applying for two grants. Deirdre was kind enough to sign up on those grants today. One is a student volunteer initiative, which calls for a grant request from this fund of $20,960, with the library providing additional fund fund of $20,960, with the library providing additional funding of over 44,000. Almost all of it is in kind services from staff, et cetera. So we're very hopeful that this project will go forward. And what essentially allows us to do is to, for a six-month time period, create a program coordinator who will coordinate, uh, teen volunteer opportunities and, both in high school and in college, you know, throughout the city. We are hoping for, let's see, 100 volunteers. We're looking for over 400 hours of, of, of volunteer effort. And if it is successful, we will possibly come back to the board and ask for, uh, uh, permanent funding in a part-time position. But this is our pilot to see if it's, it is viable. It, it's something that could make a difference in the community. I can tell you that from the library's perspective, nearly every day, we get requests from, uh, people in the community, mostly, uh, teens who are looking for community service, and we just can't handle it. But we're hoping if we, this pilot will show us a way to be able to manage it and to take advantage of, for the library, creating things like a tech squad, um, which would help, um, people intergenerationally in terms of technology, or an urban farmer, where, um, the teens could help with our, um, summer programming that relates to farming and growing things as well. Also detectives and junior librarian ambassadors. So those are the four categories that we, which should sort of hopefully pull in our teens, no matter what their particular area of interest are. So thanks to the hard work of Barbara Davis and other people, that grant is ready to roll tomorrow, thanks to Deirdre's signature. And the second grant is a grant that's being underwritten and sponsored by our children's area, our children's department, which is going great guns in terms of all kinds of programs. And this is another program, and it's entitled Full Steam Ahead. Steam relating to, um, skill sets that relate to science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And we want to ask for a grant of $6,186 so that we can do 30 weekly sessions starting in September of this year and ending in May of 2021. Ages from five to 11. The sessions will be one hour in length, and we will be working and encouraging our young people to develop those STEAM skills, which are so important as they go forward in their education and their, their career.
Is this STEAM specific?
STEAM specific.
So the, the school district is as well, in their budget, they are doing a citywide STEAM initiative. And so every school is going to get, this is the budget, we all, you know, we have to pass it, but every school is going to get a certain amount of money per student for STEAM. It's kind of a pilot. So, I mean, you guys already wrote the grant, but maybe you can work with the school district as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
So.
We didn't, I don't think any of us knew that this was.
Yeah, I just found.
Initiative, okay.
But it's a kind of district-wide initiative. So it'd be great if we were.
Which, which really makes me feel even more in, in favor of this grant, because what we plan to do in the library will mirror what's going on in all our schools, you know, and we're just, you know, both supplementing each other. So we're, we're feeling optimistic. There's over $240,000 that's available to New Rochelle, uh, nonprofits for all sorts of youth-related programming. So, you know, go New Rochelle Library.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. We applied to the RXR.
We, we will apply to the RXR Building Fund. And RXR has nothing to do with the decision-making. It's being managed by, um, the County Westchester Foundation.
This is what they put out, and it was a short deadline, but they extended it.
They extended it, right. They, they gave us a really short deadline, and I think, I think due to the hue and cry of the community, said, wait a minute, we can't get this together in less than a month. So they did extend it out, which gave, um, the library the chance to come up with these two initiatives. And again, RXR is donating the money, but they have nothing to do with the decision-making, which makes us feel comfortable. So, what's that? I can't answer that. I'll let you draw your own conclusion. But, well, anyway. So I'm happy to say our circulation desk project is hopefully coming to an end, where we'll finish the bulkhead and the signage in the near future. We're, we're working, waiting on proposals to, to manage both elements. It was interesting to hear Francis talk about the census effort, countywide. I know Deirdre's involved in that.
Yeah, I was surprised to hear you say, you guys don't, Terry's a very big part of the countywide, um, committee, and is very clear, I thought, on what, so I don't know if that's a separate pot. I don't know, the 20 million that you talked about is a separate part, but he's really involved. So I, I was surprised to hear that. I.
The governor, I think, set aside $60 million to encourage census participation. And I think the library community statewide was given, or promised, $20 million.
So that's a separate pot than what the county is?
Right, right. It is, it's different.
Okay.
But, but, you know, we here at New Rochelle Library are certainly very involved in this effort. We, it's, I don't have to tell you folks, it's incredibly important that everybody gets counted. In your, in your packet, you'll see the upcoming newsletter. You're actually the first people that have seen it. And if you look at the, if you look at the cover, it's dealing with census, and that how we're encouraging our residents to not be afraid to, to participate, because to participate will allow New Rochelle and the county and the state to receive, um, the benefits of having an accurate representation of our, of our residents, you know, um, in the national sense. So that's, that's exciting. And we actually have a staff program next Wednesday, in which we're encouraging staff to attend, because we want everybody to be excited and, um, positive, enthusiastic about encouraging our residents to participate. It's really important. Just two more minor, not minor, but two more final things. Foundation, next Foundation Board meeting is March 23rd. I don't, I don't think this has received much publicity yet, but there is a Cocktails and Conversation scheduled for March 26th. And it is, um, a resident New Rochelle, a very distinguished fellow. His name is Faruq Kowathar, Kowathai, who is the CEO of Ethan Allen. He lives here in the city. He's certainly been very charitable throughout his time here. He's written a book called Trailblazer: From the Mountains of Kashmir to the Summit of Global Business and Beyond. And he will be the, he will be the main guest at this March 26th event, chaired by Amy Bass, who does a really phenomenal job.
Is that in our book here?
Um, I, this, I printed it out from the, from the, from the prospective newsletter, and I can share this. But it hasn't, it hasn't really hit.
No, I keep on seeing Cocktails and Conversation. I just haven't seen who would be there. That's all. But it's fine.
But I, what I will do is I will, I will scan this document and send it to you with the information. But it will be the 26th, the foundation. Of course, it'll be at Alvin and Friends, starting at 6:30. Well worth people's attention. Let's see. And the Friends, the book sale will begin February 20th and la- and end on Saturday, February 22nd. The Friends Board meeting will follow on February 26th. And I just want to highlight, um, the award that Amy Teets, who was the Friends president for many years, will be receiving from Volunteer New York on April 3rd. She is a Spirit Award winner, and the category is Education and Literacy Award, and couldn't think of a more deserving person. Amy has been working here easily 25 hours a week, and I use the word working loosely. She's not paid, but she volunteers and works extremely hard managing the flow of at least 1,000 books a, a week, and, um, turning around and getting them sold. And the last calendar year gave us over $96,000. She really does a phenomenal job. She's being, um, justly honored at this event. And I know board will be participating and taking out an event. And it's a, she's well-deserving. And that's it.
Okay, so.
For that figure to the board, they were really impressed.
Yeah.
Went up.
It was quite impressive.
There. And it's all money that they raise with small sales of books, you know, 50 cents, a dollar, $2. No big checks.
Do you have personnel?
I do, briefly. Um, so we are looking to hire an hourly, uh, library clerk, circulation clerk. It stalled in civil service, but at long last, we received the applications today. That's good. We're also hoping that the upgrade for the Huguenot Children's Library, the Librarian Two, will be given to us. It hasn't. Again, it's been stalled in civil service. And also, after waiting quite a long time, we are moving forward with filling the vacancy in the library administration office. We are proposing, as you folks know, the creation of an Office Assistant Bilingual position. That's also stalled in civil service, though I believe that position will hopefully be going to the Civil Service Commission for their consideration this month. I have gotten no word about it, but that's where we stand in terms of personnel.
Thank you. So we, we're now going to do, um, board committees. Thank you, Tom. We did budget. So Sarah, if you could update us on.
Yes, but I'm going to be brief about it. So the Buildings and Grounds Committee, which is myself, Chuck, and Whitney, um, we got a long presentation on Monday, and Tom and Jean were there, of course, about the Huguenot Children's Library, this library. It was a very thorough presentation. It was a 90% draft. So we're still waiting on cost, but we know a lot about the roof at Huguenot Children's Library, and we have a lot of information to digest about this building. So I think we should pick maybe like, how long do you think we should give the team to kind of?
Digest the document.
Read that. Should we do two weeks, do you think? Have a two-week deadline? Okay. And we also have to get the information to the CROC committee because they weren't, they couldn't attend the meeting. So I'll send out an email just telling everyone that, you know, we need to have the information reviewed in two weeks. And we'll have to have an internal meeting, and then we'll have to have another meeting with APS and Russ?
Russ Watzke.
Russ Watzke, yes.
Any highlights? Or is just so much information?
So a lot of, a lot of the systems here are original to the building. Um, we're talking like.
Which means they're old and.
They're old. The roof here.
Oh, wow, 30 years, yeah. Oh, more than that.
Mm-hmm. Like the late 70s. So skylights, the roof, windows, the air handlers.
Are we up to code in everything?
Um, we are getting up to code. There were a lot of issues that were identified. So Tom has definitely hit the ground running on that.
And as, as actually have our custodial staff, we were given a, a list of things that we needed to pay attention to, and our custodial staff is on it. And I, I just have to characterize this audit as being extremely detail-oriented, and it's impressive. The principal of the firm, Doug Emelios, has spent a lot of time here and, and has given us a lot of information. And it's, it's, it's really important. It's good. So we are developing a blueprint as we digest things and consider various issues. It, it, and it, again, I'm very impressed with this document. It's rather large, lengthy, a little overwhelming, but it's, but it's, but it's all good. And the, the Russ Watzke report, which is a sort of a separate effort, was also useful. He attended with his associate, the roof person, Donald McDonald, who's an architect. And we asked, um, the team to come back to us with, um, with, um, options in terms of roof solutions, you know, from the, the core, things that absolutely need to be done, to additional elements that might make a difference in terms of the building's functionality or appearance.
This is the children's library.
The children's library.
Roof sounds like it's a problem. Yeah. So will your committee come back to this group with kind of recommendations based on the audit? Is that the, is that the goal?
I hope we can do that by the next meeting, but I'm not sure that we'll have time to read through the document ourselves.
Okay.
And have the internal meeting, and then the meeting with the.
Okay. Okay. But it sounds like at some point you'll come back to us.
We will, yes.
That's fine. That is perfectly fine. Thank you for the time you're putting into this. Have we had an audit done before, Tom?
We, um, we did actually, Deirdre. We had it done 11 years ago. And it was by Wassa, Wank Adams Slaven and Associates. Doug Emelio was, um, an employee with Wassa, but he was not involved in this, uh, the, the previous effort. And what I think is so interesting, and I mentioned it a, a number of times at that meeting, is the, the, the audits are looking extremely different. The, the, the previous audit was more of a big-picture look at some of the, um, systems and situations that needed to be addressed, which was very helpful. We made great progress in, uh, dealing with those issues. But this document does that, but it also drills down to a level of detail that I think we really need. And it's just, it's just, it's, it's magnified. And it's, it's a really, it's, it's an important document.
Well, thank you, guys. It sounds, it sounds like a lot. I actually have, because Daniel is not here. He sent me his committee relations update.
And I have the documents for our.
Oh, I have it here. He sent it to me.
If you want to read it, it's in black and white.
Um, okay. So this is the community relations report. Weekends have been extremely busy. Last Saturday's slate included Mahang for beginners, open play, yoga, tuts, needlework workshop, high school diploma equivalency orientation, African dance, drum workshop, so cookbook club. There's a lot going on. On Sunday, we hosted two documentaries celebrating African-American music roots with the legendary members of a band here. They will be here again. They will be giving a live performance next Sunday. I guess that's this Sunday at 3:00. They were very, you were here?
Yeah.
Ah, was that good?
I missed the other one.
And then after that, we will have a reception honoring the jazz musicians and members of the Charles W. Dickerson Fife Drum and Bugle Corps. Professor Bob Wessler?
Wessler.
Wessler, Wessler. And Barbara Davis are responsible for this retrospective of 90-year-old beloved New Rochelle organization. This coming vacation week, it's vacation week for the kids. The library will have activities. The volunteer AARP prepar- preparers have been helping an average of 40 residents each Tuesday and Thursday. I'm assuming with their taxes?
Yes.
It doesn't say that here, yes. They'll continue that until April 14th. We have completed grant proposals for the RXR initiative. And Barbara says we continue to prepare for the launch of the 2020 census next month. And on February 19th, staff will be taking a training course from the census coordinator. And we hope to see board members at the annual volunteer recognition literary tea tomorrow. So I got an invite in the mail. I don't know if you guys did to my home.
I got it today, because I moved and my phone rings slow.
Um, can you give us, um, the tea is here, volunteer?
It is here in the room behind us.
And it's a literary tea. It's for our volunteers, just to recognize them. It's at 4:00 PM. So if anybody can stop by, that would be great. Is that right?
It is. It's, it's, it's at 4:00. It's, um, savory morsels, so to, so to speak. Barbara doing most of the cooking. And, um, and even a, even a brief appearance is always welcome because the library wouldn't be the library without the volunteers that keep us going, whether they be our many Friends members or the many people that volunteer across the board in a variety of places.
So if anybody can come? Um, Finance Committee?
No report.
Okay. And I do not have a report, and so that means public discussion. We have so many people here, you're going to have to wait.
Can we call?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, Marjorie Sax, yeah, I know.
Missed discussion.
Okay.
Can we call?
Yes, we.
Okay. Um, so, a lot of great stuff. I appreciate, we really appreciate this. I'm speaking for my other members who are homesick. I'm speaking for my other members who are homesick. So I was encour, I was encouraged to hear that you are going to be meeting with the new city council people. I think, you know, to express concerns about the development and the impact and not, and especially about the city-owned parking lots. I know this, many of the present city council members say, oh, we can't do anything about that. But I think that there are actually lots that can be done about that. So I think it would be really important. I was at the planning board meeting when the main memorial assemblage proposal was put before the planning board. And I've really come to believe that once it gets to the planning board, it's already a done deal. And it was very discouraging. I also think I would encourage you to look at the recording of it because I believe that, I mean, obviously, I wasn't present at the meeting that you had with them, but my sense is that they probably really misrepresented the meeting that, that you had with them.
I was there. And I stayed at Iran, which ended at 12:00 midnight. And of course, we were the last item on the agenda. Certainly an interesting coincidence relative to the previous planning board meeting. I will say that they, and I, I had sent an email to the board, just basically highlighting some of the points, and meeting was repeatedly referenced in the context of there was going to be some sort of collaboration between the library and this development group regarding the redevelopment of the Memorial Highway Courtyard so that they could be in sync. I know we've had those initial conversations. I'm not aware of anything else that's gone on since then.
No, no.
Nothing, nothing.
Okay.
One thing that I thought was interesting that I had not heard at that meeting was that the, this project has the opportunity to add four additional stories, and it will relate to a community benefit, which I did not know.
Yeah. Again, you know, I just encourage you to watch it because it was, you know, several of us spoke out. You know, it's, it's, by some people in, who've been in the city for a long time, this is seen as one of the most outrageous projects that's being developed. So I think that that's it. But again, I would just really encourage you to be proactive about these parking lots. I think that there's already so much development that's going to impact the, the library, but those two parking lots are precious and for many reasons. And I do believe that it's, it's unclear in the master development agreement what the status of those is and whether they actually have to be sold to RXR. So that's something that I don't know if legally that could be, you know, looked into. But certainly, there can be political pressure put on RXR not to develop those lots. So that's it for now. Thank you, Ms. Sacks. With that, I would like to call a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting's adjourned.